No, they didn't. Can't find good help, Mike. We're live.
Are you ready?
No good?
You can switch back if you want.
No, 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 this is.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We'll start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the armed forces, followed by an invocation by Mr. Stan Bowling with the Gray Spring Covenant Church, and then the Pledge of Allegiance by County Attorney Bill DeBrau. So if everybody will please stand and join me in a moment of silent reflection.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for who you are. We praise you for your unsurpassing power, your beauty, your holiness, your love. You show us humility and a commitment of love that's beyond our comprehension and our imaginations. And in a sense, we have you on the agenda today under the invocation, and we're grateful for this moment together, but we admit what's most important is that we are on your agenda. And that's a scary thing, rightly so, but reason and faith we have to trust in you, we trust your business with us. We at least in some way understand you have become the agenda, and in this season, we remember that somehow you remain yourself and still chose to become one of us. And what do we do with that? We come to you as humbly as we can, and we ask that you arrive and you abide in our presence, in our lives. We ask for your arrival in our daily livelihoods, in our relationships, and in our community, and we ask for your arrival in your direction in this board meeting today. We ask that what's done and the way things are done are pleasing to you, and in some way advance your ongoing work of making all things on earth as it is in heaven. We really look forward to that. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, commissioners, additions and deletions. I would like to move 13A, which is attorneys' matters, to right after informational items before consent. Are there any other additions or deletions?
Madam Chairman, motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to proclamations. First proclamation is a presentation of proclamation designating Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day as December 7th, 2023. The proclamation will be presented by Commissioner Ehrman to Cynthia Ryan. I'd like to bring up your people or yourself, whoever's here with you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's an honor to read this about Pearl Harbor Day. Even though it happened 82 years ago, it should still be etched in our minds forever. The only thing similar would have been the 9/11 attacks on the World Trade Center and the Pentagon that could even come close to this. But this advanced the United States of America into a war that changed the world forever, and I should never forget, especially to our newer generations. Proclamation, Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, December 7th, 2023. Whereas on December 7th, 1941, the Japanese Navy attacked the U.S. military forces at Pearl Harbor and Hickam Field, Hawaii, causing massive damage to the U.S. Navy with the loss of nearly 20 vessels, including the battleships USS Arizona, USS Oklahoma, USS California, USS West Virginia, USS Utah, USS Maryland, USS Pennsylvania, USS Tennessee, and the USS Nevada. Additionally, over 200 U.S. aircraft were destroyed while still on the ground. The attack resulted in the loss of almost 2,500 men killed and another 1,000 wounded. And whereas, although never declared an official holiday, on August 23rd, 1994, United States Congress designated December 7th as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. Historically, this day has been known as a date which will live in infamy and causing the United States to declare war on Japan on December 8th, 1941. And whereas December 7th, 2023, on the 82nd anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor, we pause to remember those who gave their lives on that day, as well as the many who made the ultimate sacrifice for their country in the coming battles of World War II. And whereas, over 18,000 veterans of all wars presently reside here in Indian River County, which hosts approximately 20 veterans organizations, and whereas, local veterans individually and collectively, as members of veterans organizations, contribute in many ways to the welfare and the betterment of the social, cultural, and economic life of Indian River County. And whereas, on Wednesday, December 7th, 2023, the Veterans Council of Indian River County expressed their heartfelt appreciation to all veterans living in Indian River County. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that December 7th, 2023, be designated as Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day in Indian River County, and urge all citizens to fly the American flag to pay tribute to all veterans living and deceased, adopted this 5th day of December, 2023, and signed by all five county commissioners. Commissioners, thank you. Madam Chairman, thank you. All our veterans and all those that are going to be veterans or those deceased, we thank you for your service also. Again, this was truly a date which will live in infamy.
Thank you, yes. For the first time, the Veterans Council will be hosting a Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day ceremony on December 7th at the Heritage Center at 7:45 a.m. We'll have a brief ceremony, and then we have a distinguished panel of Navy veterans and experts in that area to discuss Pearl Harbor and the impact. And so we invite the community to that event. It's free, open to the public, and it's 7:45 on December 7th at the Heritage Center.
Stephen Hume, Chairman, Veterans Council. Just want to say thank you so much for doing this because one of the most important things is to remember, and right now in this day and age, I think we're seeing that. We can never forget that this day lived in infamy, and that we have to make sure that everyone going forward remembers that. So thank you so much.
I don't think people realize that our county has such a high concentration of veterans that we do serve here, so thank you for recognizing them, and we look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next item we have is approval of the minutes. I'll be happy to take a motion for both the October 17th and the October 31st minutes. I have a motion by Commissioner Lore with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. We have two informational items. Please be sure to note the service changes for SWID for Christmas and New Year, and we have our lovely event calendar, which is full of all sorts of exciting events for this month. And with that, we will move on to 13A, which is County Attorneys Matters, which is a resolution in support of the Indian River County Mosquito Control District.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Since 1925, the Indian River Mosquito Control District has been an independent special district in the state of Florida, serving Indian River County. An independent special district is a district formed by the legislature that derives its income solely from ad valorem taxes and not anything from the Board of County Commissioners. In 2021, the legislature passed House Bill 1103, which required all independent, which does require all independent special districts, to be reviewed for performance by the Office of Program Policy Analysis and Government Accountability, also known as APAGA. Couple of the different things that this review focuses on are the delivery of services by the special district and also comparison of similar services provided by any other municipalities or by the county. In this situation, mosquito control district services are truly unique. The county or any of the municipalities would be very hesitant to start to step into their shoes, and also the comparison of similar services, there really are none. I mean, we don't have any planes that would do any type of spraying or any other type of machinery. It would take us a long time to get up to speed that the mosquito district now has. So in order for them to continue their independent special district status, they are asking for a resolution that would be sent to Tallahassee, thanking them for their services and asking that they remain as an independent special district. Madam Chairman, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, and I would concur. We would be very hard pressed to do any kind of mosquito control services ourselves. I feel like we have our hands full with what we have going on. I would like to thank the Mosquito Control District. I know there's several commissioners here today and their executive director and some staff. I would like to thank them for their efforts in Felsmer as of late with the giant flood of 2023 that we had.
Here, here.
They are growing like pterodactyls out there, so we appreciate you guys being out there and doing what you do. You do an amazing job for our western parts of the county as well as the rest of the county. Would you guys like to say anything before we?
Good morning. I'm Sherri Burrows. I'm the Executive Director of the Indian River Mosquito Control District. I would just like to thank the commissioners for your continued partnership with your staff and your support of the district, so we couldn't do it without you. Thank you so much for your approval.
Fantastic, thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
This came about, the questionnaire came about last year when I was chairman in reference to the Mosquito Control District, and we received a questionnaire from the state performing these, performing this survey of all the mosquito control districts that came to my office, and the questions that were answered, I thought were kind of slighted against mosquito control. The question they asked the most was basically if we didn't have mosquito control, who would do it? And like you said, we wouldn't, we would have to do it, but we wouldn't want to have to do it. Because I think they do an outstanding job, and that was part of the question that we were asked, is that who would manage this, or would there be a better way? There wouldn't necessarily be a better way. There would be the only way, and that would fall upon us, and I'm glad we're not in the mosquito control business, that we have people that can do it. And I do think there's a couple of folks here, though, that Matt and Tommy, who's a former county commissioner and former mosquito control commissioner, I can't believe you all, I don't want to say anything.
If I start, I won't stop.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Fleischer, and I would add, I know that the state has been kind of on a rant lately with special districts and looking at them, but this is one of those special districts that definitely serves a huge purpose in the community, and you're absolutely correct. We could not and would not want to have to do it.
I could understand the state's concern about looking at special districts, and it should all be based upon performance level, and we're in front of a great group. How many are out there swatting? You're not. That's because they're doing a great job, so we fully support Mosquito Control District. Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair, I'll just say anytime an agency goes through the APAGA review and they're successful, it's a good thing.
Concur wholly. Yes, Commissioner Moss.
I'll just add, for those who might not realize, mosquito control is elected, so it's an elected body, and it's not a high-paying job. So thank you to all of you for running for election and for serving the community. It's appreciated.
All right, well, we have a motion to approve the resolution by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. If there's no further discussion, anybody from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much. Thank you for what you do. All right. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Commissioners, would anybody like to pull anything from consent?
Item eight, Charlie.
Eight C. All right.
I'd like to pull eight L, just for information. Couldn't read it in the backup, it wouldn't come through.
Eight L, okay. Anybody else? Anybody from the public wishing to pull any item? All right.
Move to approve as amended?
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Moss with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Commissioner Fleischer, eight A, or eight C, sorry, eight C.
Item C, Charlie, thank you. We're looking at the lobbyists for 2024 legislative session. When this was first proposed six months ago, we stated that we would be looking at an assessment, report card, guided by what the accomplishments were. It is taxpayer dollar. Those of you who pay taxes, it's $120,000 a year for a lobbyist, and I just would like to have a little bit more background. I believe that we need to be responsible to our citizens, that we're paying an outside entity to look after our needs and concerns up in Tallahassee. Looking at the list or the item, it stated that they've been helpful in some matters, but I don't believe that that's enough of a report card. I also have seen some things, we've had some trials and tribulations that I believe that we should be, but should have been aware of, that we were not aware of, and it just, I wanted the item opened up, and I see that we have our legislative liaison here, so I'd just like to have a bit of a report card on it, on what the accomplishments were, the return on investment for $120,000.
Madam Chair, members of the board, what I would add is, this particular contract is with Anfield Consultant, who has been the county's lobbyist since February of 2015. The one six months ago was our federal lobbyist, when we kind of hired somebody to help us at a much significant lower rate than this. So what I would add is, you know, the legislative session moves quickly, and many times, the commissioners and/or our own internal governmental affairs person cannot be up there, and things happen in a very rapid pace, as we saw the one item you mentioned, the tourist tax, tourist development tax, thrown in, lumped in into a larger tax bill, caught a lot of people by surprise to include, you know, I think it was FAC and the League of Cities and others, but they do on behalf of, I can tell you, because I have been up there and working with Anfield, and they make, they open the doors because of the connections that they have to meeting with committee staff, members, and senators, even prior to a bill comes up for consideration, and that's invaluable, because if you wait to that committee hearing before you make your comments or your testimony, it's typically already done. There's a lot of decisions, there's a lot of minds and opinions already formed, so working with agencies as well as, and those committee staff, specifically the key committee staff, and then the chair of those committees is critically important at the front end. The other component I think that they do is, as we identify our capital projects and things that are important to us, they evaluate and they look out for those issues, and then they also help us working with state agencies in terms of, as we, I think, one of the things, like the Septic to Sewer has been one, and there's been a couple other projects where they've been helpful in trying to get a return on that. So what I would say is, they do do a post-session report. I don't think it's broken down into a return on investment. I think we could get something together, you know, in terms of, you know, for instance, let's take Septic to Sewer, or take one of our grants with the natural, you know, the historical resources. So say we have a project that falls 15, they're working on trying to get enough funding for that committee like at 17, so our project gets funded. So they're trying to make sure that committee gets enough money, so our project, if we rank 15, it would happen to where we would get it. So I think we might be able to put together something, working with Anfield in this upcoming year, that would show the amount that's actually returned to the taxpayers. And what I would say is, even at the federal level, because I know that's another contract is, and that, it takes time, specifically at the federal level, if you don't have a seat at the table, that means you have no plate, and there's a lot of Indian River County residents that are sending money to Tallahassee and to the federal government, and we're just trying to get our fair share back, you know, as we see many other communities getting their fair share and more. So I think that's the genesis and the catalyst behind the importance of having, you know, and establish, and in particular with Anfield, we benefit from not just their group, but they also work with, you know, former president, Senate President Ken Pruitt, who obviously is very, you know, intimately familiar and aware of all the things that happens in terms of the mechanisms behind the scenes and how to get things done, because it's a very complicated, complex, can be very fast-moving process, so we benefit from that history and that experience. But I will, working with Kathy, we will work on, besides a post-session report, try to translate that into a, here's what we, you know, the, like last year, we did get, we did get some, didn't we get one appropriation last year? No, we did not. Okay. So we are, I know there was, there was two priorities, there was a couple priorities, and a couple of them were not successful, but we have worked with our legislative delegation to try to figure out ways we can get more money coming into the county than what's going up to Tallahassee.
Just two points. One was that I brought up the assessment, and I'm very grateful that we're going to have a report card. I brought that up because when we went unrelated with the federal lobbyists, we said we would have a report card in December as well. So at that point, it is a separate issue, and the direct benefit is, has not been received. However, the greater benefit is that we don't have to go up to Tallahassee as frequently, and again, there is a collateral benefit. I'm sure there is a savings to offset that $120,000, as agreed, but I believe that we should have some sort of a report regarding that, because we really don't have that much contact with them, and we are taking $120,000 from our taxpayer coffers.
So I just want to, I don't disagree that it's good to review these contracts on a regular basis and make sure that they are fulfilling the needs that we need them to do. I would point out that Indian River County is a little bit unique in the fact that our delegation is a two-person delegation, so we only have one senator and one representative fighting for us in Tallahassee, and several other counties and those surrounding us have multiple. I mean, St. Lucie has five or six, Martin has many more than we do, Brevard, Osceola, and our state senator at this point covers five different counties. So trying to ask them to advocate as strongly for us as some of the other advocacy that other counties are getting is just not going to happen, because they're stretched and there's only the two of them. So having somebody up there, whether it's Anfield or somebody else, looking out for what our legislation is doing is a good thing. I think the main benefit of them is not necessarily in what they bring home to us is in what they prevent from happening to us through challenges to home rule and those types of things, and I, that's kind of hard to quantify in a monetary manner, but I know they've been very successful in getting language that we've asked for included in several bills to protect the county on different things. So I do think it's good and healthy to review these on a regular basis, but I would say some of it is hard to monetarily quantify, and the other option is what the commissioners used to do, which is go up to Tallahassee every week.
And miss.
And try to advocate themselves and make those connections, and I know that's not something that we are necessarily good at. I mean, we are good at it, but it takes time to build that, that relationship, and as far as meeting with them, I know, at least myself, and that might be because I'm up there a little bit more frequently, do meet with them on a regular basis, and they come down here and try to meet with all this staff as well. I think Commissioner Moss has asked them to come meet with her on a couple of different issues in the past, and they've shown up to do that.
Yes, and they have representative bracket, and I served together on Vera Beach City Council, so, yes, they've been helpful.
So, and I would offer one thing, give you one example, Commissioner Fleischer, last year, and I came on board at the same time this was happening, and, you know, I worked for St. Lucie County before, but there was a push for mobility, you know, changing concurrency to requiring mobility planning. And so just to put in context, you know, if everybody was required to do that mobility planning, and that bill's out again, it costs Port St. Lucie probably quarter million dollars. So, I mean, if we think of by them, working with representative, working with the representative, but we actually were, met with the committee staff, to my point earlier, to, you know, provide them the information, why, not saying that the mobility planning bill was bad in of itself, but how could it be cured to protect counties so we have the right to choose what's best for our interests? It's something that we've talked about, internal staff, is mobility planning right for us, but the point is, we want to make that decision. I know Port St. Lucie spent probably three quarters of a mil, almost half a million dollars, and when all was told and said, you know, doing their mobility plan and their consultants and all that, and then the county had to spend a significant amount of money trying to address that issue, so, and it would have affected us as well. So we continued, and I worked with Senator Pruitt and Natalie and the staff in terms of trying to address issues related to that, so we wouldn't have that mandate imposed upon us. So to Madam Chair's point, is sometimes they prevent a bad bill that could cost us. We don't tangibly see the dollar amount right now, because if you look at the staff analysis, this has no impact to local government, but there is a fiscal impact. If we're all of a sudden required to go out and hire a consultant, that's going to charge us a couple hundred thousand dollars to come up with a mobility plan, and then it's going to impact our development community and/or impact, you know, the way we do, and maybe have to hire additional staff. So there's a tangible example of how, you know, just working on some bills that are just, they're not good for us. They're not, they're bad.
Well, I think pulling the item, we had a great benefit. I think the public at large understands that it's not just... I think the public at large understands that it's not just, we need them. It's more of an issue, as well as with the understanding that we will have a report of sorts as well, as well as the other one. So with that, motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to second that. That is a motion by Commissioner Fletcher to approve Anfield contract, the second by myself. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move on to eight L, award of bid number 2024016, Sporting Clay's Facility Improvements.
Madam Chairman, thank you. Mike, if you would, I couldn't get the backup material.
It doesn't pull up.
For some reason, it wouldn't load last night and the other day when I was looking at it. I'd just like to, no objection to this, because I think it's something we need to do, because it's such a big sport right now, that pretty much if you build it, they will come, so.
The staff report won't pull up, but the...
Yeah, we're delighted, sir. This has been a long time coming and had been slowed by the need to, for the county to purchase mitigation credits. Want to thank Public Works and Rob Skok for seeing it through and our staff. But this award is actually refreshing in this environment, actually came in at our engineer's estimate. So we're delighted to move forward with your approval. But this will establish the Clay's course and the depth that we've been struggling with under wet conditions will be raised, and the course will be thriving soon as finished.
So, just for, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, right now, the Sporting Clay's course, when it rains even a little bit, ends up being underwater because of where it's located on the property, and then they have to close it down. So this will allow, we had to get mitigation credits from St. John's and to kind of raise that up and redo the course, and that was part of redoing that second course as well. So this allows us to move forward. What is the total cost?
It's $399,000. Yeah, which is refreshing.
Which there's a $200,000 grant, so the county's paying for $199.
Yep, from FW, just state.
I just wanted everybody to know about that, because somebody saw this and they're like, well, what is it? I knew what it was, and obviously.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate the effort on that. I think it's a good investment in the gun range. It'll enhance it even further. So I'm glad we're moving forward on some improvements with this. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Sure.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Fletcher. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, wonderful. With that, we will move on to Supervisor of Elections, canvassing board appointments. Welcome, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Katie Otto, and I am the Election Administration Coordinator for the Supervisor of Elections office. Today, I'm here on behalf of Supervisor Swan, who sends her apologies that she couldn't make it this morning, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have in determining who your canvassing board member and alternate will be for the 2024 election cycle. Any questions?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. Do you guys have any questions?
I think it's your call, Madam Chairman.
Right.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, I can't serve, even though I love to serve, because it's just fun time.
It is, and great salary.
Yeah, great salary, and you get snacks. But candidate who has opposition and the election being canvassed cannot serve. So there are three scheduled elections for this year. The presidential preference, the primary, and then the general. So at this point, obviously, I would be out for the primary and the general, which would also throw you guys out, which would leave it to Commissioner Fletcher and Commissioner Lor. So with that being said, I guess that's the, y'all are the choices, so you can duke it out over first and second, if you'd like, but...
Well...
You want me to just make the decision?
I guess it's kind of obvious, and looking at the list and the candidates, I kind of knew that it would come to this moment, and I guess, you know, maybe that's why we have different names in front of us too. You know, they wanted to scramble it up a little bit, the selection. But I would be honored, I looked at the dates, and it's not, there's no conflict on my schedule. I don't know, obviously, I could not talk with Commissioner Lor, or Fletcher, or whatever.
Commissioner Lor, would you, I mean, would you like to serve as an alternate?
Absolutely. Well, there's only one other choice. I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Unless you want the obligation, I mean...
I think you're more experienced in that than I am.
I have done it a few times, and it's, it's, it's an honor to do.
Do you need me to send something official, or does this serve the purposes? Okay, so Commissioner Fletcher and then Commissioner Lor will be the alternate.
Okay.
Don't go by that, go by us.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you being here. All right. With that, we will move into the first of several public hearings. This is 10A1, D.R. Horton's request for vacation of the Orchid Reserve subdivision plat. Welcome.
For the record, Brandon Craig, in Chief of Current Development. Good morning, everybody. This is the Orchid Reserve subdivision plat vacation. The property is located approximately a half mile north of County Road 510, east of U.S. Highway 1. The plat provides for 100 residential lots. There are also open space tracks, a roadway tract, and some easements that are also in this tract. The property owner owns all affected lots within the property. The property owner will be re-establishing this final plat in a slightly different configuration through the final plat process. Last December, the property was granted a new preliminary plat for exactly 100 residential lots. Everything's being shifted a few feet here and there, so it's going to almost look the same as this right here, it's just a slightly different configuration. No county easements will be retained at this time, however, when we do go through the final plat process, that's when the easements will be re-established and retained. So with that, staff recommends that the BCC vacate the Orchid Reserve subdivision plat.
All right. Are there any questions of staff? All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on the sidearm, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commission, what's your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Check.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lor with a second by Commissioner Fletcher. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, can we take just a two-second break, because I can't find my quasi-judicial language cheat sheet.
Why don't you go a little longer?
Yeah, we, let's take a five-minute break so I can get my stuff together, sorry.
Still getting the swing of this chair thing. We'll be right back.
Doing awesome jobs.
Good to go, Madam.
So, all right, are you guys ready? We're ready, okay. All right, we will call the meeting back to order now that I have the proper script. So, the next item on the agenda is Windsor Properties' request to rezone approximately fifty-two point nine six acres from A1 Agricultural One and RS Three Residential Single Family to PD Plan Development and to obtain conceptual PD Plan approval for a project to be known as Windsor North Village PD. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. The parties to the proceeding are Indian River County and Windsor Properties, Inc. So, we will go through the checklist, Commissioners. At this time, I'm going to ask any, all the Commissioners to disclose any ex parte communications, site visits, or independent investigations. Commissioner Lor.
I have not been to the site. I was approached by one person that began discussing, discussing it and delivered some paperwork to me. I have not reviewed the paperwork, and that was a very brief discussion.
All right, Commissioner Flesher.
Madam Chair, thank you. Almost dito. I was approached by a citizen who had a traffic concern on A1A. And during the discussion, it was identified that it regarded this site. At that point, the conversation was ended, and I was provided with paperwork, which I did not review. And at that point, I also passed the site many times. It is in District Two, and I do travel A1A to the county line. So, I'm familiar with the site, but there was no independent research, conversation, or analyzation of this project. I was unfamiliar with the project at the time and point of the constituents' request.
Thank you. I myself was also approached by a constituent regarding this project. I informed them this was a quasi judicial proceeding, and as such, we are generally advised not to have communication. They also gave me paperwork, which I will pass down for the record to the clerk. I peripherally looked through that, but did not read it in depth. Commissioner Ehrman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have not been to the site, but I was approached by a citizen referenced to the same issues that Commissioner Flesher and yourself were with regards to traffic, possibility, possible issues, and any type of issue back there with the, the one site closest to A1A. But other than that, that is all.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Moss.
Yes, I received a copy of the letter, which I guess was part of public record. I think it was hand-delivered by a constituent. And in addition to that, I did attempt to investigate with my own appointee on the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's Mr. Mousher, with regard to, the backup material on page one thirty-two. It's only two sentences, so I'll read it, because I hope we'll be discussing it in full here today. It says, "It should be also noted that several other adjacent or nearby property owners expressed their concerns over different aspects of the project during the PZC public meeting." So, I wanted to watch the video of that or read the minutes, and neither the video nor the minutes are currently available. So, I called him to ask him what his recollection of that particular matter might be.
All right, thank you. This time, I'm going to ask each Commissioner to confirm that they have an open mind and are able to base their decision on the evidence presented in applicable law. Commissioner Lor.
I can and will.
Can and will.
Can and will.
Fantastic. All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask the clerk to swear in all witnesses collectively. Anybody that is going to be offering testimony, or presentations, or speaking on this matter, please stand to be sworn in. That would include any residents that are intending to speak, or anybody else. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right. At this time, we'll move on to a presentation by county staff. Ryan, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A member of the Commission for the Record, Ryan Sweeney, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. This is the Windsor North Village Plan Development Request, Plan Development Rezoning and Conceptual PD Plan. A brief slide covering the plan development rezoning process. Today is the first step, which is the PD rezoning and conceptual PD plan approval. That requires a public hearing and a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, which occurred back in October. And then today's public hearing is final review and approval. It should be noted that the applicant is also requesting Step Two concurrently, which is preliminary PD plan plat approval. That's at the P and Z level, and that has been approved, subject to the board approving today. The third step is the land development permit, or land development permit waiver, which is reviewed and approved at the staff level. And then ultimately, the final PD plat comes back to the board typically as a consent item. Project site is located west of Highway A1A and east of the Indian River Lagoon, immediately north of Windsor PD, the existing project. And we'll get, and to the north of the site is the Pelican Island National Wildlife Refuge. Here is an aerial depicting the existing conditions of the site, together with the proposed development pattern overlaid on the aerial. You can see the existing development pattern, and again, Pelican Island to the north, Windsor, what I sometimes refer to as Windsor Proper, or Windsor PD to the south. So, a quick summary, proposed development summary. The existing Windsor PD project was approved back in nineteen ninety by the Board of County Commissioners and has been, by and large, built out over the past thirty-plus years. There's a few lots remaining, but otherwise, that project is built out. This project site is fifty-two point nine six acres, proposes a total of forty single-family lots and six multifamily attached townhome-type units at an overall density of point eight seven units per acre. It does include a new, larger fitness center that would be utilized by this, this development, as well as Windsor Proper, and a staff parking area that we'll talk more about. And there have been several different design proposals slash iterations. This project originally was proposed as just the residential development. Then it came in as just the fitness center and parking area, and then ultimately, it's been combined into two. This is, this project's been going on for about three years, stop and start. So, the conceptual PD plan, again, shows the forty single-family lots, including a six down here at the south end, the clubhouse, the new fitness center, and two building pads for the, the future six-unit multifamily, as well as all of the infrastructure and the staff parking area, and several different driveway connections down to the existing Windsor PD project site, which will allow residents of this new project to, you know, to travel into Windsor Proper. They can get all the way down to the golf course and the clubhouse and ultimately utilize some of the existing driveway connections to A1A. And vice versa, the existing Windsor folks can come up into Windsor North to utilize the fitness center. And ultimately, if they're going north and want to go out the northernmost driveway, they can. That's a resident-only driveway. So, through the plan development project, the, the project is requesting waivers. The site is zoned both A1 and RS Three, but the entire site has an L1 underlying lineage. So, really, the RS Three is sort of the more appropriate of the two, but I did provide the A1 just for reference. The proposed PD with the zero setbacks, I know that seems a little extreme, but this project will be subject to the Windsor Code. It will be part of the overall Windsor PM Master HOA. And the Windsor Code itself is about seven volumes of documents. It covers everything, including building placement, building materials, building design. It, it provides sort of a, I'd, I'd call a modified new urban designs, award-winning by Andres Dwaney. It has build-two lines, it has all, it, it has a lot. So, even though it allows for zero-foot setbacks and eighty percent, eighty percent of lot covers the reality of it is, is the, the principal, together with the accessory units and a courtyard-style pool, typically is still about forty to fifty percent. It just allows them the flexibility to move about on different lots with different designs. The traffic circulation plan includes the existing driveway connection to Highway A1A, which is currently Ocean Run Lane. That, that area will be reconstructed and reconfigured to include the staff parking area. And then we'll ultimately jog down and connect to, of course, the name's going to escape me, there's existing parallel roadway to the south here. There's also several other new connections between the existing and new Windsor projects. The new northbound driveway connection, or roadway connection to Highway A1A will be private gated, resident-only. It will be served by a southbound right turn lane and a northbound left turn lane. And both of those turn lanes will also serve one hundred and tenth place, which is the Wabasha Estates subdivision. So, not only will it provide a safer turning movement for the northernmost driveway, but it will also afford the residents of Wabasha Estates to utilize those same turn lanes. The conceptual stormwater plan includes a conventional fresh stormwater pond, which will handle, will handle the volume and treatment for the, the development. And then ultimately, that pond will outfall into a new man-made saltwater estuary, which is tightly connected to the river. So, it will mix the already-treated freshwater with saltwater, kind of creating a brackish water environment that will ultimately outfall back to the river in a much more enhanced treatment process. It'll only outfall when, you know, at, at certain stage events. But, you know, instead of outfalling freshwater back to the river, it's, it's a much cleaner, better mix of, of treated water. The conceptual landscape and buffer plan includes a twenty-five-foot type B around essentially the entire sort of eastern portion of the project. Immediately south of the new north driveway, again, is the Wabasha Estates subdivision. And north of the southern connection is Turtle Cove, which the subdivisions don't show up here, but I can show you. So, they have a twenty-five-foot type B between those two developments, except that a fifty-foot buffer tree preservation area and an eight-foot tall masonry wall will be provided along the entire length of the proposed staff parking area. The project also includes a twenty-five-foot buffer tree preservation area between the roadway connection and Pelican Island to the north, along the, I'd say, Eastern Third. And then the Western Two-thirds is a twenty-five-foot, a reestablished twenty-five-foot maritime hammock planting area that's being coordinated with Pelican Island. To the west is Jungle Trail. There's not a landscape buffer requirement, but there is a thirty-foot buffer easement, essentially setback, that'll be a platted buffer easement, as well as a ten-foot wide limited access easement that will prohibit motorized connection to Jungle Trail. There is a small non-motorized connection at the very south end for more like a kayak golf cart-type connection, but no motorized connection, ten-foot limited access, thirty-foot buffer easement. And to the south, there's no buffer requirement, because they do connect to Windsor PD. Environmental and archaeological issues. There is a very small point-six-seven acre low-quality isolated wetland. This site was a former citrus grove. So, it's really a wetland that reestablished in a grove furrow, but nonetheless, it's, it is worth mentioning. There are no uplands on the site, but there are some existing trees that will be protected and some will be relocated on-site. The archaeological resources, this, essentially, the entire island side that's not developed is, is considered to be in an area higher to potentially have archaeological resources. The project has conducted a Phase One and Phase Two archaeological assessment, and no findings have been found, but if they come across anything during construction, they have to stop and, you know, deal with whatever they may have found. It will require an additional final permit from the Department of Historical Resources from the state of Florida. Mentioned the Jungle Trail Management Plan, again, the thirty-foot buffer easement and the ten-foot limited access easement. And then Pelican Island National Wildlife Refuge, I'll, we'll discuss a little bit more later, but the, the project initially between staff and Pelican Island, and then ultimately, more recently, the, the developer has, has coordinated directly with Pelican Island on some of the proposed improvements that they're working on. Required improvements and other conditions. The project includes an internal sidewalk pedestrian system, a, a ton of trails and other pedestrian-type improvements. Street lighting throughout, it will follow the same street lighting that's in current Windsor, which is a low-level, low-intensity street light. Green space and recreation area far exceeds the minimum requirements. That's one of the main, I think, draws for this area. North Barrier Island corridor regulations, it is within the North Barrier Island corridor. The, obviously, the aesthetics and the building design far would exceed what would be our minimum requirements, but it is worth mentioning that it is in that corridor. Individual homes are not subject to those rules, but again, the Windsor Code is well over and above what that requirement would be. And again, the Windsor Code requirements are applicable. And the Ocean Way subdivision plat vacation, which we'll formally visit as the next item, but currently, that southern, yeah, maybe, uh, let's see here, if, existing, maybe I don't have a great slide. Yeah, oh, here we go. Well, no, I, I had gray over it. There's an existing twelve-lot subdivision that makes up this southern connection right now, which is the Ocean Way subdivision and, and Ocean Run. Again, we'll get into specifics of it with the next item, but that, that area will have to be vacated in order to be redeveloped per the proposed PD, because there would be conflict with what's being approved versus what's currently plotted there. Apologize for the slide management there. Neighborhood interest in town hall meeting. So, most of the surrounding property owners in Turtle Cove and Wabasha Estates have been involved from the start, even from the first and second iterations of this project. Some have certainly expressed concern or disapproval, whether it be during TRC, or have received emails. You all have received at least one letter. In the, one of the iterations, which was the fitness center parking area only iteration, the developer hosted a meeting at the Windsor Town Hall, and, and about thirty residents attended, staff attended. We were there to answer questions. It was not a staff-sanctioned event. It wasn't a public hearing or anything like that. It was, but we were there to, to observe, and this is the formal public hearing now. So, the public benefits proposed by the PD, again, the man-made estuary and enhanced stormwater treatment for the, ultimately for the discharge back to the lagoon. The partnership with Pelican Island National Wildlife Refuge, they're going to be doing some removal of exotics, replanting that maritime hammock. And then there's some operational sort of things that they've agreed upon moving forward to be good neighbors. And again, the northbound left and southbound right turn lanes on A1A, they would not be required by the code based on the turning movements and the speed of A1A. DOT is requiring them as a safety improvement, but to us, it's over and above what the county code requirement is, and, and it is benefiting not only the, the project, but also Wabasha Estates and just the motoring public in that area of A1A. So, that is a public benefit, or public benefits as well. Planning and zoning commission, at its meeting of October twenty-sixth, the P and Z voted seven-oh to recommend that the BCC grant conceptual PD and special exception approval. They also approved the preliminary plat subject to. And there was two modified conditions that occurred during that meeting, and ultimately, follow-up with the developer and the resident that spoke. And ultimately, there was originally going to also be another eight-foot-tall masonry wall between Wabasha Estates and the northern private roadway connection. The individual said, hey, you know, if this is going to be just a gated residential road, traffic shouldn't be so bad. I'd rather not have a big, tall, obtrusive wall in my backyard. Developer agreed, staff agreed, we can remove the wall. But the one caveat was, he didn't want that roadway connection to be utilized as the construction access during infrastructure construction. So, we will also make it a point that when the LDP is reviewed and approved, that that northern driveway will not be designated as the construction entrance. There will be, of course, some noise and aggravation when the roadway is being built. The homeowner, you know, acknowledged that, you gotta build the road. But once that road is built, it won't be utilized as the construction entrance. So, staff's recommendation, I forgot to update that part, but the BCC approved the PD rezoning and conceptual PD plan for Windsor North. Wow, I missed this slide entirely. Including the wetlands permit, vacating the Ocean Way plat subdivision, the, for Department of State DHR concurrence letter for the archaeological resources, the Pelican Island National Wildlife Refuge permits, Jungle Trail management buffer easement and compliance items, final landscape, street lighting, and tree protection plans, removal of the northern eight-foot-tall masonry wall and prohibiting the northern driveway, or roadway from being utilized as construction access, constructing the southern eight-foot-tall masonry wall as early as possible in the process in the Highway A1A turn lanes. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Commissioner Moss.
Thank you. In the materials, it says that the applicant is seeking concord approval of Steps One and Two at this time. Step One says a review and recommendation made by staff and by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And Step Two references a final action taken by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Has this been before the Planning and Zoning Commission twice or one time? And how does that jive with this request?
It, so it was reviewed one time, and, and the P and Z's request was to review and make a recommendation of the rezoning and the conceptual PD plan, which they did recommend that you all approve. They also approved the preliminary PD, which is Step Two, subject to you all approving today. So, it went once as a combined item. But the P and Z is the one that approved the preliminary plat. You all don't actually review and approve the preliminary plat, but it can't be approved until the conceptual PD.
So, was P and Z aware at the time that there was, it was a combined item then?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and the, the recommendation and the, the language is, is slightly different to the P and Z as it is to you all. You guys are strictly reviewing the conceptual PD and PD rezoning. There, there's, includes the preliminary PD recommendation.
Okay. And with regard to what I was attempting to research, and that was, and again, this is looking at the backup material, which is page one thirty-two in the larger book, and page two with regard to this matter. And says, and I'm just reading it, that adjacent or nearby property owners expressed their concerns over different aspects of the project during the planning and zoning public hearing. And as I previously mentioned, I was not able to watch a video. It hasn't been uploaded yet to our website, or, nor are there minutes available. You were there presumably, and to your recollection, could you state some of the other concerns?
Sure.
So, we know what they were.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Moss, so, I would say overwhelmingly, the, the, the main objection is the, the staff parking lot, the concern of some of the residents is that it will be utilized by excessively loud or noisy users. I, I don't believe that's the intent, but you're, I can almost guarantee you by seeing the folks that are in the, in the room, you're going to hear those same concerns. The, the reason that I specifically identified the, the changes that occurred during the P and Z, because I wanted to make you all aware that some items were raised that did result in changes. The other items, there are concerns over the project in general, but it didn't result in a change. The fifty-foot-wide buffer with the eight-foot-tall block wall was hard-fought by staff and by the residents, or for the residents. Not that the developer didn't, you know, not want to do it, but they didn't want to volunteer, you know, anything more than they really needed to. So, that was, that was one of the biggest sort of back-and-forths over the years. So, that, that's the biggest item, I would think, that, that remains that you'll hear about today. Other than that, there, just anecdotally, there's been, historically, that site's been utilized for some, you know, some different uses over the years that Windsor ultimately, it'll go away once it's developed, that the neighbors have also had some issues with. But I don't want to, I don't want to confuse this quasi judicial hearing with that past use.
Thank you.
The concerns that I've heard from what you said is mostly the staff, that new staff parking area that they're talking about proposing. But the eight-foot wall's going to go there, but not on the north, not on the
Correct.
southern side, right?
It, it, it will be, here, perhaps the
Bring that slide back.
Yeah, that's probably the best slide. So, I'm sorry. The blue line is the eight-foot-tall masonry wall, and that is a fifty-foot-wide buffer. That's between the sixty-seven parking spaces, and those are, those are standard automobile-sized spaces and single-family homes to the north. The, there was also a wall, if you can see my cursor, in this northern area, but again, the home, there's only four, perhaps five, but I think four lots that back up to the northern driveway. And the most vocal person from that group said, hey, if this is just a resident gated private driveway, then it shouldn't be, you know, the, the, the potential issue should be less. And, and they, he was against having a, a big wall in his backyard, so to speak. So, that one has since been removed.
Right, I mean, you're right. There is a construction phase, there's, there's going to be some issues on either side of this. There'll be some construction phases, but the eight-foot wall on, that's the northern end, correct, would be, would be built?
The southern, the southern.
Southern, that's the southern, okay, okay. Let me get it right, my direction's right, okay. Yeah, that's what you said. Okay, southern end parking area down there?
Correct.
What is the area to the A1A side, that little area? Step one says a review and recommendation made by staff and by the planning and zoning commission. And step two references a final action taken by the planning and zoning commission. Has this been before the planning and zoning commission twice or one time? And how does that jive with this request?
It, so it was reviewed one time and, and the P&amp;Z's request was to review and make a recommendation of the rezoning and the conceptual PD plan, which they did recommend that you all approve. They also approved the preliminary PD, which is step two, subject to you all approving today. So, it went once as a combined item. But the P&amp;Z is the one that approved the preliminary plat. You all don't actually review and approve the preliminary plat, but it can't be approved until the conceptual PD.
So, was P&amp;Z aware at the time that there was, it was a combined item then?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and the, the recommendation and the language is slightly different to the P&amp;Z as it is to you all. You guys are strictly reviewing the conceptual PD and PD rezoning. There's, includes the preliminary PD recommendation.
Okay. And with regard to what I was attempting to research, and that was, and again, this is looking at the backup material, which is page 132 in the larger book and page two with regard to this matter, and says, and I'm just reading it, that adjacent or nearby property owners express their concerns over different aspects of the project during the planning and zoning public hearing. And as I previously mentioned, I was not able to watch a video. It hasn't been uploaded yet to our website or, nor are there minutes available. You were there presumably?
Correct, yes.
And to your recollection, could you state some of the other concerns?
Sure.
So, we know what they were.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Moss, so I would say overwhelmingly, the, the, the main objection is the, the staff parking lot. The concern of some of the residents is that it will be utilized by excessively loud or noisy users. I, I don't believe that's the intent, but you're, I can almost guarantee you by seeing the folks that are in the, in the room, you're going to hear those same concerns. The, the reason that I specifically identified the, the changes that occurred during the P&amp;Z, because I wanted to make you all aware that some items were raised that did result in changes. The other items, there are concerns over the project in general, but it didn't result in a change. The 50-foot-wide buffer with the eight-foot-tall block wall was hard fought by staff and by the residents, or for the residents. Not that the developer didn't, you know, not want to do it, but they didn't want to volunteer, you know, anything more than they really needed to. So, that was, that was one of the biggest sort of back and forths over the years. So, that, that's the biggest item, I would think, that, that remains that you'll hear about today. Other than that, there, just anecdotally, there's been, historically, that site's been utilized for some, you know, some different uses over the years that Windsor ultimately, it'll go away once it's developed, that the neighbors have also had some issues with. But I don't want to, I don't want to confuse this quasi judicial hearing with that past use.
Thank you.
The concerns that I've heard from what you said is mostly the staff, that new staff parking area that they're talking about proposing. But the eight-foot wall is going to go there, but not on the north, not on the
Correct.
southern side, right?
It, it, it will be, here, perhaps the
Bring that slide back.
Yeah, that's probably the best slide. So, I'm sorry. The blue line is the eight-foot-tall masonry wall, and that is a 50-foot-wide buffer. That's between the 67 parking spaces, and those are, those are standard automobile-sized spaces and single-family homes to the north. The, there was also a wall, if you can see my cursor, in this northern area. But again, the home, there's only four, perhaps five, but I think four lots that back up to the northern driveway. And the most vocal person from that group said, hey, if this is just a resident gated private driveway, then it shouldn't be, you know, the, the, the potential issue should be less. And, and they, he was against having a, a big wall in his backyard, so to speak. So, that one has since been removed.
Right, I mean, you're right. There is a construction phase. There's, there's going to be some issues on either side of this. There'll be some construction phases. But the eight-foot wall on, that's the northern end, correct, would be, would be built?
The southern, the southern.
Southern, that's the southern, okay, okay. Let me get it right, my direction's right, okay. Yeah, that's what you said. Okay. Southern end parking area down there?
Correct.
What is the area to the A1A side? That little area, that vacant area? Take your cursor down, that right there?
Yes, that, that is a small, what they've identified as an equipment storage area. It's, I believe, five, 6,000 square feet. It, there, it is also buffered entirely. The opening is only about 15, 20 feet wide. I, I, it would be some very small equipment, nothing larger than, I would say, maybe a bobcat that could be stored there, but a front-end loader or something like that would not be able to, to fit and maneuver in that area.
Okay, and then those are, those are houses directly to the other side of the parking area?
Yeah, these are, these would be, these are proposed, would be homes that would be immediately west of the parking area. That would be new homes inside Windsor. I also, I'll point out, just for what it's worth, there are existing homes. So, if you can see my cursor again, sort of, this would be the parking area. These are the existing homes to the north in Turtle Cove that will have the buffer and the wall. But the homes on the south side, they, they have a somewhat of a buffer, but they're going to front, for lack of a better term, on the parking area as well, and they will not have the benefit of a wall. So, any existing Windsor residents, if, if there's any bad behavior, they're going to be the first to complain.
Okay, that, that, so, I mean, and Windsor's stuff is more stringent than even her own stuff because they want a certain atmosphere and a certain ambiance to the area. So, I like that. I, I've always known them to do everything pretty much first class. Okay, you answered my questions, so thank you. Madam Chairman, I'm done.
All right. Well, you asked some of my questions, but on the east side, abutting A1A where the parking lot is, what type of buffer is there where the wall ends?
That's also, yeah, it's a 25-foot type B that, that would be along the A1A frontage.
Okay. And is there any type of turn lane in the south entrance?
Not on the southern one, no. There was, it was not identified. It's an existing driveway. I don't know that if DOT treated it differently as opposed to the new.
Okay. That's my questions for now.
Right, you, you mentioned that you were thoroughly impressed with the construction standards. Yes, they are off the charts, and I, I concur with you. My experience goes farther back when I was wearing a uniform and around when it was developing. And I agree with you. One of the concerns that happened, was happening then, was service vehicles on A1A being parked or dieseling at the time. And I understand that, that during the construction phase, that is going, that may happen. Not, I shouldn't say going to happen. It's anticipated that there's a likelihood that some service vehicles will have to be waiting in queue to, to get in or construction vehicles. And you said that, that the other entrance is not going to be used as a construction entrance, as an agreement. Going forward during customary use, when this is completed, what, are you impressed with the service vehicle response or accessibility to the location? Because there will be continual service vehicles there.
I, well, I don't want to show, play favorites by any means, but I will say that the, the individual homes, when they're built, usually, I mean, these are sizable homes, obviously. So, they, each contractor typically has their own construction trailer. They're contained to the site. I mean, Windsor currently, right now, they're dealing with vehicles, you know, service providers, whether it be, if it's not new construction, they're constantly under some stage of remodel or some other project. So, I think that the parking area will help, actually help that, that portion. But once the infrastructure's built, which will be the heavy lift, it'll probably be, if I had to venture, I guess, about two years' worth of sort of heavy construction. The single-family homes are pretty well self-contained to their individual home sites. And, and given that it's been 30, almost 34 years, 33 years since they were originally approved, and they're just now building out, you know, this isn't going to be built like a spec home where the 40 homes are built overnight. It'll probably be another decade at least where these homes are built over time. So, individual homes will be built sort of in a calculated manner.
So, once again, the, the access for service vehicles will, will be, the accommodations are suitable for a, an even flow where we're not staging any vehicles on A1A?
Correct. As soon as the infrastructure is commenced and the, the construction access is identified, they're going to bring the vehicles in and locate them central to the, to the heart of the site, away from A1A and away from the homes. That, most of the excavation and most of the infrastructure work is going to be in the, the big part of the site.
Well, from the map, it, it does appear that there's accessibility and there's in a way to flow the traffic in and out and have the service vehicles do whatever they're doing to respond or at the site and then depart consistently without interference.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, there will be, there probably will be times where some of these, you know, the foundations are, they're big pores, so they have to have multiple concrete trucks come at the same time. That's going to happen, but that's no different than every oceanfront home that's been built over the past, you know, 20 years. They do have, it's just the nature of the, the beast, so to speak.
Again, not a continual disruption.
Correct.
It's presumed that construction will occur.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Law, do you have any questions?
Just a couple. Ryan, you mentioned earlier the Windsor code was above and beyond, which is refreshing. As we can imagine, we've all been to Windsor. The freshwater pond, I think, is a great idea. Was that their idea or was that required as stormwater?
Oh, no, that's, that's their idea. I, I would say that if the golf course and the, and the polo field is the draw for Windsor current, that the natural and man-made environment is the new draw for this portion. That's, it's, it's their, this is their pitch for what is Windsor North, is the, the, the walking trails, the observation trails, the outlooks, the estuary. That's, that's, that's their amenity, so to speak.
And obviously, it's within the urban service area, and it's consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Correct. And it's, like I said, it's .86 units per acre. The L, the L1 land use allows up to three units per acre, but by the time you do your stormwater and all your infrastructure, you know, most conventional residential subdivisions on the mainland yield about 1.5 to 2. These are larger estate lots, so.
That's all I have, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Ryan, for now?
Again, just that, you know, this is a long time coming. I, I, again, you know, I, I don't know that anybody's going to be 100% happy, but we've, we've come a lot farther from here and here to much closer to here, is all I can say.
Fantastic, thank you. At this time, we'll have a presentation by the applicant, if they want to give one or say anything or come on down.
Good morning, Aaron Bowles, MBV Engineering. We have no presentation, but with me is Mark Justice, Vice President of Construction, and Bruce Parquet. We were in agreement with Ryan and we thank him for his time and staff's time for the years of back and forth and the internal design that Windsor's had with, with Duwanni and, and their whole design team. So, it's been a long time coming. We appreciate everybody's efforts, and we're here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Not at this time. All right, thank you so much. And at this point, we will take input from the public. Anybody from the public that wants to speak on this matter, feel free to come up. There are two mics, so you can queue up in line. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, William Farrell. I'm president of North Beach Civic Association, and also, I live across the, kind of across the street, within 300 feet of Ocean Runway. And I'm kind of late to the party. And anyway, I'd like to speak first for the A1A situation because of the people on the island. They asked me to come to this meeting and went before it with the P&amp;Z. We've had some transportation problems on A1A. I've had, and I, I want to say something. I love Windsor. They're great, and I, I respect them. I want them to be great neighbors. They have been great neighbors in some ways and some ways not. You know, I do appreciate the development and the beauty of it. And there's a very good article in Bureau Beach Magazine about this property. Doesn't mention the parking lot. It talks about the streetscapes. It's a great article. You should read it. Talks about the beauty of Windsor. And Windsor can be beautiful, but there can be aspects to anything that don't work. Now, my background is a transportation consultant and development consultant. I worked on Windsor, I mean, on, on Viera, Space Coast Town Center. MBV should be familiar with that one. That was my property, my, it was a partnership. I've worked on a lot of these things and with transportation and trips. And it's not working now the way that we've been talking about. I'm just surprised. And there's good, been some good changes. But what I'm hearing is not what I heard before. And I'm just wondering, I'd like to clear up some things. It appears that this is the main construction entrance for Windsor, and it's been utilized that way. I mean, you go out there in the morning, you're lucky if there's 60 trucks. And they were on my grass and on my lawn and my neighbors' lawns, and that's what we were upset about. But then they went and put in this parking lot, and I hope this is going to function. I don't know if they've done traffic trip studies. You know, I've done trip studies on projects. I'm working on the Space Coast Town Center, which is bigger than this right now. And we did trip studies and we knew how many nearby to traffic, but the congestion on A1A is not a good thing, and I hope they can fix it. But the parking lot, you know, I can see why people wouldn't want that in their backyard. I just hope that doesn't cause more congestion, because what I heard about this parking lot is not what I'm hearing today, and that's what I'm concerned about again. I understood it was a transfer lot, that they were going to transfer from commercial and service vehicles. Well, you don't like the word "commercial." Maintenance, it says on your plans, maintenance and service vehicles, you're going to transfer from, from those vehicles to golf carts. That was my understanding, that that's what this was going to be about. And I don't know if that's going to function or if they have enough golf carts. They've done a poor job of gate management. I love Windsor, but they've done a terrible job of gate management. And that's why we're having all this congestion. But they're using this entrance not for a few cars. As you can see, I mean, I've got pages of pictures of, of things. I'm just showing you this example, but that's what's going in there. And if that's going in the parking lot, I don't know. And I don't know where these big trucks are going. There's just a lot of questions we have, a ton of questions. And I think the people, you know, that are in the subdivision, they came to me first. They are the only reason I found out about this. I had no notification, although I'm right there from the county. And I haven't really been involved in this. But I'm kind of upset because I wasn't notified. And my, one neighbor was finally notified, and the other neighbor has never been notified until recently when I, I got her names on the list. I got her names on the list. But there are three of us. And the, in the county thing that says there's only one ownership on the east side, well, there are three of us. And one of us sold Windsor, that property, as a subdivision. Mr. Machado sold them that property. It was a, it's a plotted subdivision. So, I would like to know if this is going to be their main service entrance and transfer lot, because that's what I've been hearing. And if that's not the case, I'll be happy in a lot of ways, you know, about this parking lot. But that's not what we've been hearing, and that's why people are really concerned. That's part of the reason. But are people going to sit there in the parking lot with their trucks and wait for these golf carts to transfer? I've still heard about this golf course thing, cart thing. It's not come up, and I don't know about that. And it's not even mentioned in this article about the parking lot. We're just concerned about the parking lot and the traffic management. And the traffic management has been really poor, and I wish they cleaned up their act. But I love Windsor and their beautiful community. I just want them to fix some things, and that's why I'm here. Because once you start passing things and you start changing things, and we didn't say anything, then there's a problem. That's why we're here, is to speak up before things happen. And I don't want to be the policeman against Windsor. I'm not trying to be that, but we want our quality of life. And the people in, in, in the Turtle subdivision are concerned about their quality of life. They don't want people sitting there running diesel trucks waiting for the golf carts. But that's what we've been hearing, that it's a golf course, golf cart transfer lot. Now, has that changed? I really wonder. That's what I've been hearing. It's a, they're going to transfer to the golf carts because they don't want the service vehicles in the community. That's what we've been hearing. So, I don't know what's happening.
Okay. Well, let's, let's find out.
Well, we
Ryan, what is the intention for the parking lot?
I, I will attempt to answer, but I'll also ask Mark Justice to, to weigh in. But it's my understanding, it's a combination of employees of the club, so they will park their passenger vehicles and get picked up in some form of transportation. There are, there are service providers. There's, I mean, any given day, yeah, there's multiple vehicles coming in to do the various things that they do. This will get them off A1A and into that lot. But the big construction vehicles, I mean, I've heard 18-wheelers. I've heard, you know, large commercial dump trucks. Those won't be accommodated at this lot. And so, the day-to-day functionality will be two things. One will be subject to Windsor's own rules, which I said, you've got homes immediately across and immediately to the west that will be there. I mean, if, if anybody's going to speak up and complain, it's going to be the folks that just bought a rather expensive home immediately next to the slot.
Could you look at the exhibit? Yeah, okay.
Mr. Bowles or Mr. Justice, do you want to clarify the usage of the parking lot?
Good morning, Mark Justice, 3125 Windsor Boulevard. Yes, so Ryan's correct. There is, it is a construction entrance. The parking lot is there and will get vehicles off of A1A in the morning so that they're not lined up and on Mr. Farrell's property. The golf cart transfer, as he refers to it, means that the, the construction vehicle, some of the construction vehicles, light vehicles, not commercial vehicles, like the ones that he had in his photograph. I'm not sure where that was taken. That's not at that entrance. But the large commercial vehicles will not park in that lot. They will be on, usually are their deliveries or some other function that they go into the community, and then they leave. The only vehicles in that lot will be light vehicles, light trucks, light cars. Things like that will park during the day. At 5:00, it closes, and then everyone's out of there. So, no overnight storage of any vehicles.
So, to summarize, the intention of the parking lot is to provide a place for employee, for the parking lot, is to provide place for the employees to park their cars and get them off of A1A. Then they would transfer via company transportation to whatever area of the community in which they're working. But that entrance will also serve, because the north entrance is not to be used for construction
Correct.
as construction entrance, but the larger construction vehicles will be going into the site to whatever particular site they're constructing. They're not storing and stacking in the parking lot.
Not the large commercial vehicles, no. Light trucks, cars, those types of vehicles will park in that lot. The, the larger vehicles that are deliveries or, you know, concrete trucks, that sort of thing, go directly to the site, excuse me, go directly to the site, and then they leave.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mark, is this just for the development that we're talking about today? This parking area and everything that's right there would just be for this development, not for Windsor proper right now?
No, they do utilize that for all of Windsor. There are other areas in Windsor that also serve same function for different locations. For example, in the south, we have what we call the South Village, which is the southernmost part of Windsor. We have another parking area just off of that that's utilized for construction and other service in that area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
They're using it for all of Windsor right now. That's the only entrance they're really using. I mean, I live there and I watch it. It's mostly the commercial vehicles that are going in that Ocean Runway through that existing subdivision that's going to have to be changed. But we do have concerns about how this is going to affect us. And I don't like the parking lot on A1A. I'm glad that, and the wall extension may help. We were hoping this was going to be screened. But I also don't think they should have, I don't like that maintenance area, stabilized maintenance area where they're going to store equipment up by A1A. Of course, I didn't know about the wall until today. That's another change. That may help. But I don't like equipment, and we, what we talked about But I don't like equipment, and we, what we talked about at the planning and zoning meeting, because there's a lot of stuff on that property now. We don't want dumpsters up there, and we don't want oil storage for fuel. You know, we, we don't want noxious uses in this, next to the parking lot. And the maintenance thing, that concerned us, having a maintenance lot right up front. I don't know why Windsor would want to do that. It's not going to be pretty. I, I just don't understand why they'd want to do that.
Okay. Well, there is a 25-foot buffer between A-1A and the maintenance area and the parking lot. And my understanding is the maintenance area is very small, that would fit like a lawn mower or something of that nature, not huge storage area. But there will be a 25-foot buffer, so you will not be able to see it from your
It's 6,000 square feet. You could put trucks in there, anything. I mean, it's not, it's not a huge area, but it's not a small area.
Okay.
Okay. It's, it's, it's 6,000 square feet of, over that, of, of storage, maintenance storage. It's a maintenance lot right up front. And I hope that wall will screen us. It wasn't, that extension wasn't there before that I remember.
Well, my understanding is the wall is something that came out of the conversation at planning and zoning. So you guys raised some concerns, and staff got with the applicant to try to address those concerns, hence the wall.
There's one more big thing that's coming up, because A-1A is going to be widened. And I guarantee you, because Windsor has turn lanes everywhere else, they're going to want the turn lanes. I think Windsor should take on these turn lanes. There are no conditions on this thing about, you know, what they're going to do. And I love Windsor, but I just would like to see some conditions or thoughts come out now at this meeting about how this is handled. And I'd like to, and I appreciate that Windsor may be trying to help us, but we do have concerns. And I've done large projects. I'm doing one in Melbourne right now that's bigger than this one. And we are working on trips and how to make this work, and there's a traffic flow. If you do this golf court thing that they're still talking about, it's not going to flow properly, and you're still going to have, going to have a transportation problem, and you're going to need turn lanes there, and this has not been addressed. I know it's coming, and DOT is getting ready to do this in 204, 25, which the county doesn't know about, you know, about the widening. I work with this, with the DOT every day. And I'm working on the bridge, and they want to widen and put more bicycle lanes. Windsor needs to leave enough room because it's expanding some. So I'm just telling you, that's coming. And, and nobody seems to know about that, but, you know, the, we keep up with these things on the north beach, and we try to, but we didn't know about some of this Windsor stuff. And I'll let the other people speak about the parking lot, but we do have concerns. And I hope the county commission can protect us in a good way, and Windsor will protect us, because we want to be good neighbors.
All right. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Merry Christmas, I'm sorry.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Kathy Farrell, 10890 Highway A-1A. And we weren't notified. They thought there was only one house, but a quick look at a photo would say, you know, there are three there. We're the middle house, and we're directly, almost directly across from this main entrance. My concern really is not only for us, but for the motoring public. Because when we walk out in the morning, when I walk out to get the paper, there've been days where there've been, before the gates are open and the traffic flow is regulated, there are three dump trucks full trying to turn in before the gate, just to get out of A-1A. Long line of cars going south, cars north. And at one point, we had a dump truck parked squarely in the northbound lane. I have a nephew who goes to Melbourne every morning for work about that time. And there are actually periods where there are cars stopped on A-1A because they can't access Windsor until the gates are open. So if Windsor could do a better job of coordinating that, or maybe allowing them to go up as far as the guard shack, that might relieve some of the traffic until they have their proper lanes put in. But that, that's my big concern. It's a, it's a state road, state road A-1A, and it's the only connector off the island to the north. So if we could improve that situation, access for vehicles during heavy times, it would be a tremendous help to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Good morning. I'm Ron Shelley, 3485 Mariners Way. I'm the president of the Turtle Cove Homeowners Association. I represent about, well, the 21 owners of that neighborhood. I'd like to concentrate on the Ocean Way portion of the project. The rest of the 44 acres with the homes, we had no problem with. A few issues that I'd like to get cleared up, since over the course of about three years, it still is not clear to me. So the original plat for the Ocean Way subdivision included about 30,000 square feet of conservation easement. And that was the, all of the different spaces in between the original 12 plats of, of homes that zoned residential. That conservation easement dedication is under the notes, paragraph eight, and the conservation area between each of the 12 lots are dedicated in perpetuity to Indian River County for the conservation of native lands, native plants and species. I bring this up because I didn't notice any mention of it by the staff or the P&amp;Z in the plat vacation review process. I just wanted to make you aware that that's actually there, and that hopefully you consider The first paragraph in Barrier Island Corridor 911.20, the first paragraph is the purpose and intent for the North Barrier Island Corridor. And it's preserve and enhance the Barrier Island community, increase property values, and prevent the establishment of incompatible land uses and unattractive developments in the corridor. So the question was brought up on how this project would increase our property values. The Windsor lawyer stated during the town hall meeting that was hosted by Windsor, we asked, how is this project going to increase our property values? And the Windsor lawyer stated, it's not their responsibility to raise our property values. So how is this? It's in the ordinance. I'd like someone to explain the North Barrier Island Corridor ordinance 91120 and how the purpose and intent does not apply to almost a quarter acre equipment storage area in this maintenance parking lot. Okay, we go to the plans. Under the waivers list on their, their plans G103, it shows detached bathrooms and outbuildings will be allowed. So can we get a more accurate accounting on what exactly will be stored in the equipment storage area? What will be allowed and what won't be allowed? And the same for the activity of that maintenance parking lot. Mr. Justice just said that there's no large commercial vehicles. So I find that hard to believe, that the support for not only old Windsor, but the new North Village is not going to have any large vehicles that go in there. And with the ongoing code enforcement violations that they have, I would like it to be clear so that there's no misunderstandings going forward. What is going to be allowed and what's not going to be allowed? So because of that, I'd like to bring your attention to a letter that I received from our insurance agent, and she stated that any parking lot next to our subdivision could cause us to lose our homeowners' insurance. The insurance companies use a system called C O P E, and how the property is constructed, who's occupying it, what the protections are in place, and what is the exposure to dangerous activity? If there's any dangerous activity that goes on in that parking lot, or in that maintenance, almost a quarter acre of storage, may be a problem for us if this gets approved. So I'd like to hear also how the proposed town halls, homes that are between the fitness center and the parking lot will be used. Will they be sold to normal residents, or are they going to be used as part of Windsor's guest housing and transient homes? What requirements are the county going to have in regards to this transient housing? So those are my points for today. Hopefully you'll consider those and discuss them and get an answer for us.
All right. Thank you so much. Anybody else from the public? Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. Adele Shelley, 3485 Mariners Way. And I just wanted to briefly say, first of all, you keep very cold in here, and I don't know if it's to make a shake, but I wanted to also talk about the, the most recent issue in the Vero Beach magazine. The article is called "Green Village." And mostly, it's, the last sentence reads, "Thus, the North Village is designed for the wellness of both its residents and its environment." Well, please consider Turtle Cove's wellness. We back up to this, the Ocean Way subdivision, that that's what we're opposed to. Ryan described how wonderful it's going to be in there. Mark described how wonderful Windsor is. And yes, they are, but it's on the outskirts that we're going to suffer from what they want to do. It's specifically the area, Ocean Way subdivision. We don't want you to rezone it. Leave it as the beautiful houses that they're talking about. We've lived there for eight years. We live right in the, the very corner of the cul-de-sac. Mark had said that, oh, they moved the, the maintenance, their landscape workers. We had heard them day after day with their weed whackers, the clanking of the, the ladders, transferring from their trucks onto the golf carts. Ryan doesn't know because he doesn't live there. He doesn't imagine it happening, but it does happen. And that's what we want you to, to just take consideration for us, that we do live right butted up against this, this concept that they're thinking of. There are probably other areas that they could put their maintenance, or whatever terminology that they're using, if their parking lot, staff parking lot, it's a maintenance area, landscapers. Landscapers come there every day. It's not just the initial loud construction, which we know is going to happen, and yes, it's going to be beautiful where the estuary is, and that's no problem for us. It's the daily existence of their, the way they utilize the golf carts, it's the, the weed whackers, the loud clanking, the, sometimes the loud music, how they burn rubber in there because they, they get done at 4:00, or they're waiting to, for the gate to, to let them out, or just to be able to leave. So firsthand, I am telling you, it is noisy over there. And we're just asking you to not only take in consideration the wellness of Windsor, we want our wellness to also be addressed. And we're just asking you to look at it and, and maybe rethink this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else? All right. If there's no more public comment, then we will have our final presentations by county staff. Ryan?
Madam Chair, the main, the only one thing I do want to point out is that Mr. Farrell, Mr. Graff, and Mr. Machado all did, should have received their mail notices, both for P&amp;Z and the board. Mr. Farrell should have received it at his home address. Mr. Graff has a Connecticut mailing address, and Mr. Machado has an industrial airport address listed with the property officer. But we did send out mail notices. Those are the three Oceanside residences.
So you guys send the notices to whoever that
Whoever's within 300 feet of the entire project site.
And you send it to the address that's listed as their
On their property, on the property officer's website. That's what we utilize.
Not necessarily specifically to the address of the property?
Correct. Yeah, not to the site address, to the owner address.
To the owner's address.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's also a rather large email group that we've been maintaining as well. That's, most of those folks would have also received the mail notice, but they also get it via email much quicker.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
Okay. Any final questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Moss?
Based on the comments we heard, are there ongoing code violations at Windsor? And if so, what are they? And can that be resolved?
Well, the code violations will go away based on the fact that that use will not be available once they put houses there.
Correct. And I can speak to that, Andy Subcheck, Director of Planning and Development Services. There have been ongoing code enforcement issues with this property that we're considering today. And those issues relate to uses of the property, such as having trucks store, dumpsters, things like that. I will say that Windsor has a temporary use permit from the county to use a small area of that site. That is sanctioned by us through this permit. And so really, development of the site kind of takes away all of those issues, because you no longer have those areas available, they're being developed. So I, I think this would, would basically resolve the code enforcement issues.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions of staff, thank you. We will have a final presentation by the applicant, if there's anything you guys would like to add. All right. Have all documents and tangible evidence, evidence been admitted into evidence in the hands of the clerk? Yes? Fantastic. At this time, then we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, questions, concerns, what is your pleasure? What is your input?
Madam Chair, with the discussions that we had, the individual commissioners, and in totality of what we've all read and understood, I will motion staff recommendation to approve.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Lor with a second by Commissioner Ehrman. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. That will move on to the next public hearing, which is Windsor Properties, Inc., request for a vacation of the Ocean Way subdivision plat, which is legislative in nature. Are you doing this one too, Ryan?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right.
So I forgot, legislative, we jump right into, so we don't have to do the
Right, we don't have to do all that
All the quid pro quo stuff. So, again, for the record, Ryan Sweeney, Assistant Planning Development Services Director. This is a tandem item to what we just reviewed and approved. This is the formal plat vacation of the existing conventional subdivision for Ocean Way subdivision plat. Again, the project site is located immediately north of Windsor and immediately south of Turtle Cove. It consists of 12 single-family lots, a 60-foot-wide private road right of way, which is Ocean Run Lane, actually, Ocean Runway, and some easements and other items. There are county utilities present in Ocean Run Way, and those utility easements will be covered by a county utilities easement until such time as they are reconfigured. I'm sorry, perhaps I should go to my, sorry, subdivision here. So the property owns all affected lots. The property will be developed as part of Windsor North PD project. Again, I was mentioning the county utilities easements that will be in place until such time as the utilities are reconfigured, and then ultimately, that whole area will be replotted. And also, the Ocean Way subdivision did dedicate 10 feet of right-of-way for, for State Road A-1A, which that, that portion is being retained. We are not releasing or otherwise abandoning the right-of-way for A-1A. And with that, staff's recommendation is that we, that the BCC vacate the Ocean Run subdivision plat. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this, is there any questions of staff? If not, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
William Farrell, gain 10890 Highway A-1A. I hope this experiment works with the transportation in this lot. And I hope you cleared up whether this is going to be a golf course transfer thing to park those trucks, and we'll have to wait for all that traffic out there. This is my concern, and it still hasn't been answered, whether this is a transfer lot, or it's going to be free-flow of transportation with the trips. The trip management really hasn't been explained today, and so I still just say I have concern about this experiment that Windsor is doing, and I'm not clear about it, and I've been at this a long time before. And so I may be back to you. I'm just saying, I may be back to you if this doesn't work. I hope it works, and I hope they have the staff and the golf carts to handle what they're talking about. And that's what I ask Windsor to really staff this, and they need to be there early in the morning, and they need to and they need to keep this place open so this traffic flows. Because it's not flowing now, it's not working. So I got another shot to speak. But it's not working now, and I'm telling the county commissioners, and I've told DOT, and DOT is concerned, and DOT has been involved in this, and they've had problems. They've been all over Windsor, and they've been all over me because I put up stakes along my property so they wouldn't park on my lawn. And now they're parking on the other side of the street, and there's still backups. But I think it's going to get worse with this parking lot unless they change their plan. They don't want to talk about the transfer to the golf carts. And that's the problem we're worried about, all of us, because that's where it's going to get congested, and that's going to stop everything. So on that, I'm going to go away, and thank you very much. But please be advised that we might have a problem. And DOT, DOT is getting ready to widen that road and make sure there's space for those turn lanes, because I don't want it on our side. Windsor is forcing these things, and they're going to need turn lanes, and you should have that condition on this thing for turn lanes. You need some conditions because it's going to bite me or bite you later. There's got to be enough spacing for this, for the transportation planning. It hasn't been transportation planned at all that I can see. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Ron Chelli, 3485 Mariners Way, President of Turtle Cove Homeowners Association. I'd like to talk about that conservation land. Did we discuss that at all? Is it going to be at all considered of giving that away?
Sure, I'll discuss it. This is really a strange plat. It was platted back in 1990. And by the terms of the plat, in between each of the 12 proposed lots, there are conservation and drainage easements. Usually those two uses are not compatible. A conservation easement does not contain a drainage easement. In the terms of the, in the dedications of the plat, it provides that these areas can't be cleared. So in between the individual, you know, third acre lots, you're going to have 20 feet of property that's not going to be cleared, but yet it's going to be used for drainage. I don't know how you're going to try and catch slope in a conservation area and still have a drainage easement. In any event, the lots have never been developed. The conservation easements are on paper, just like the lots. And so, you know, whatever is out there now is, what is there? I mean, I don't understand how you can have a drainage easement and a conservation easement.
Can I add one?
It's dedicated to the county.
It is indeed. And the lots are owned by different people out there, but they only exist on paper. There's nothing out there now that's a conservation easement or a drainage easement.
In other words, it'll remain the same?
Yeah.
If I could...
With the vacation of the plat, then all those dedications go away.
That's true. There is nearly a full acre of tree preservation area in the new design. Along that 50-foot buffer will more than offset the very poor design of having so-called conservation easements in between lots.
Well, I would, I would, so what, it's a 12-foot conservation easement between each lot?
Twenty.
Twenty? You're...
It's 20 feet.
But the overall project, if you look at the bigger project that this, that would be replacing this plat that's being asked to be vacated, you have a new mangrove habitat going in. You have 25- and 50-foot planted tree buffers.
The area that would be immediately north of here, that would be between Turtle Cove and the parking area in particular, is, by and large, will be a preserve area with existing vegetation.
Correct. And then if you look at the overall project that is being combined with, and the estuary that would be being built, would vastly outweigh the current 20-foot buffers or 20-foot conservation areas?
Yes.
All right, so it's a conscious decision by the board to do this. Can we talk about what is going to be allowed? And when this gets vacated, on what is going to be allowed in that maintenance area? Because we didn't discuss it in the last portion of this.
So if I could, Madam Chair, the reason for the vacating of the plat is because we just approved a PD that allows something other than what is a conventional subdivision. In the near term, I don't think much is going to change. The roadway is going to remain in its current capacity and its current alignment. It's a private road. Rather than being shown as a private right-of-way, it will be owned and maintained by Windsor as an access. That same 60 feet will be also covered by a county utilities easement because there are county utilities present in that area. And until such time as they're removed or reconfigured, we need to cover ourselves. But otherwise, it becomes a blank piece of paper. And it, you know, it's a, it's a single, large parcel that will ultimately be redeveloped.
So vacating the plat allows the prior decision to occur?
Correct. Because we couldn't authorize development of the new PD across platted, conventional, single-family lines.
Okay.
So I still didn't get what was going in that maintenance storage area. What is going to be allowed so that there aren't future code violations? Like we have existing right now today?
Conversation's already, was determined at the previous hearing.
I didn't hear it. What was determined?
That was part of the previous item.
Yeah, but this is the land that's being vacated. I'd like to know what's going, what is going to be put in that maintenance area? What is going to be allowed through county code? What's allowed to be in there?
Sir, we've already, we've already talked about how Windsor's performance is above and beyond the counties. I think that with those of us that have been familiar with Windsor, we have to trust and believe that it's going to be top-notch.
I'm sorry, sir, they have an ongoing code enforcement...
Right.
Continuing order because of what they, they don't do in regards to county rules, ordinances, laws.
Right, and we previously talked about that, that that would be resolved. The code enforcement issues will be resolved.
I believe it's going to be moved to this parking lot that they're going to put. When you vacate this plat, this is where it's going to move to. It's just going to be relocated. So is the continuing order going to move? Or do we have to start that process all over again?
A continuing code enforcement order?
Yes, ma'am.
It's bound by the existing TUP area, which is back further west in the...
So there's an existing temporary use permit that that order is associated with. With the planning, with the PD being approved, that temporary use permit goes away, and that use is not allowed anymore on that particular piece of property.
Okay, that's perfectly clear. So we would start, if we could fast-forward it to what's going to be allowed in that maintenance and storage area so that we can not have issues of code enforcement violations?
What is allowed in the maintenance and storage area would be what would be allowed in anybody's maintenance and storage area?
Be no different than any other area, like was stated previously, that there be a trailer, a bobcat, some sort of other type of equipment that would be there for the use of the property while it's being developed.
No, we're talking about after the development.
And it's walled off.
We're talking about after the development, not while it's being constructed.
Well, if...
What are you concerned about what's going to be there? What is your concern? I haven't, other than just it's going to be used for maintenance? What specifically?
So every open parking lot that Windsor has that's not adjacent to any of the homes is, has dumpsters, large dumpsters, because garbage trucks don't go into Windsor. They go around with the little dumpsters and collect everybody's garbage. Those things sit somewhere. So the big garbage trucks have to come in. And I'd like to know if Mr. Justice can answer, is the big garbage trucks going into this? He said no large vehicles are going into the parking lot. Is it going to be a storage area?
No large vehicles would be parking in the parking lot.
Correct, just parking in the parking lot. So the maintenance area that you're referring to, first of all, let me describe the garbage situation that Mr. Chelli is referring to. The, we have two large compacters on the very south end of Windsor, approved by the county. They were recently installed. There's a recycling compactor and a garbage compactor. And waste management comes in there to unload those periodically. It's no different than any other facility, you know, around the county. As far as the maintenance area goes, the intent there, and I can't tell you what's permitted to go there, but I, you know, that's for Ryan to say. But the intent is to put electric equipment that the landscapers will use, you know, as Mr. Brawl pointed out, maybe a bobcat, a couple of golf carts, that kind of thing to charge. That's it. There's no, there are no dumpsters or garbage containers or anything like that in that maintenance area. And the parking lot is just that, is a parking lot, which will take some of this vehicle traffic off of A1A in the morning, so.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns, or what is your pleasure? This is, just as a reminder, this is a vacation of the plat.
Madam Chairman, I would ask staff just to, you know, work with Windsor and maybe, you know, keep an eye on this area for the traffic that Mr. Farrell's talked about. Make sure that everything's being done correct. I have no doubt they will. But, you know, maybe behoove us during the, especially the early phases of construction, to have staff up there a little more often just to, just to double-check and make sure that nobody else is being impeded or affected in negative fashion. I think that's, it would be smart for us to do that.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Moss. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next item is a public discussion item. I request to speak from Ms. Skylar Jenkins with an idea to increase public safety on our roadways for bicyclists, pedestrians, drivers, and impacted animals. Ms. Skylar is coming to us off of the Science Fair project, I understand, where she has discovered some things that might be useful for us, and she wants to share those with us. So thank you for being here. It is not very often that we have such a young constituent come and talk to us, but it's very impressive that you are here because sometimes people think we're scary, but we're really not. So take it away. We look forward to hearing from you.
Some of us.
Well, I can't speak for you, but the rest of us are nice. I'm kidding. He's great, too. Go ahead.
My name is Skylar Jenkins. I am a fifth-grade student at Liberty Magnet School. I live in Sebastian, and I dance almost every day at a studio in Vero Beach. And most of the time, we drive home after dark. I conducted a science fair experiment because I noticed a need in our community for safer roads at night. I believe that we should use a glow-in-the-dark road paint to keep people safer because they could see the road lines even if there were no streetlights. An example of this is already being used in Australia. They are already using photoluminescent road paint to make the roads safer and the environment healthier. I see a lot of people walking and people riding on bikes at night on our drive home. We should add the glow-in-the-dark paint on our roadways because I think it would help drivers pay closer attention to staying centered in their lanes while driving. And I think it will help keep bicycle riders safer on the bike lanes and keep pedestrians safer on sidewalks and crosswalks. While researching for my science fair project, I read an article called "Hopes Glow-in-the-Dark Roads Could Reduce Road Toll in rural Victoria", which was published in September 2022. The article states that 46% of lives lost on rural roads in Victoria, Australia, happened because of cars running off the roads. They have added glow-in-the-dark road paint as a solution to this problem. Since they have painted the roads, they have done research to see that there is little impact to the paint from rainfall. And even on days that are not very sunny and overcast, the glowing road paint is still visible. So I think this would be a good investment for our county. Would it cost less to paint the roadways with the glow-in-the-dark paint than to spend the money to add streetlights and, on electricity, to power the streetlights? Plus, there are the negative impacts to the environment because of the light pollution from the artificial lighting. I wonder how many people have been injured or killed because of cars running off the roads at night here in our community. The glow-in-the-dark road paint could potentially save lives. I wondered how temperature would impact the glow-in-the-dark paint. So I designed my science experiment to test my question. I used a glow-in-the-dark pigment powder made with strontium luminate. I mixed it with clear nail polish to create a glow-in-the-dark paint. I painted nine rocks, and I kept three rocks at 72 degrees Fahrenheit and placed three rocks in the freezer overnight at 32 degrees. I placed three rocks in the oven at 110 degrees. I used the color temperature meter to record the brightness of all the rocks. All the rocks glowed, with the rocks at 72 degrees glowing the brightest and longest. I did more research, knowing that glow-in-the-dark paint used strontium luminate can glow up for up to 12 hours. Not only is this a good option to increase the safety of people, but it will also help the environment and the animals. Near beach communities like where we live, we have sea turtles that are impacted by lights near the ocean. We have many roadways that line our beaches, which could use the glow-in-the-dark road paint to increase visibility for drivers and help protect the sea turtles even more. Another article I read while researching was called "Keeping Sea Turtles in the Dark" by Mark Winter at the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. He says that lights can keep female sea turtles from coming on short away their eggs or end up on roadways. I believe that the photoluminescent road paint would be closer to the ground and not in view of the turtles on the beach like the streetlights. I plan to reach out to organizations like Coastal Connections and other sea turtle conservation groups with my idea for glow-in-the-dark road paint to research if this is a good solution. I ask that you consider adding glow-in-the-dark road paint to your budget to improve the safety of our roadways. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a very well-thought-out and well-researched and supported commentary. Kudos to you. I can see why you did so well at the science fair. That was fantastic. And I applaud you for reaching out to Coastal Connections and other sea turtle groups. But I would also like to offer to maybe connect you with the state of Florida, DOT. They have a testing facility over in Auburndale called Suntrax. And what they do is they test different type of roadway setups and improvements, different type of toll booths. They test electric cars out there and all sorts of stuff. So maybe we can hook you up with them and see if they might do some testing on glow-in-the-dark road paint, especially for some of our rural areas and rural counties where there is no street lighting. I know out in Felsmere, on some of those roads, it would probably be very helpful. So if you wouldn't mind, I can get your contact information through the application that you put in and maybe reach out to you and your mom and see if we can set something up. We just had, some of our staff went over there for a field trip for the, there's a state agency called the Metropolitan Planning Organization Advisory Committee, which is made up of people from all over the state. They did a big tour. I unfortunately missed it, but I heard it was really cool. And I think that might be a great place to take this on for statewide advocacy. So if that's something you're interested in, I would love to be able to try to make that happen for you.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I was going to expand upon that. So it was a great presentation and great ideas. Most people that come here to talk to us want to just tell us about the problems and don't come with solutions. And I appreciate the fact that you came with a solution. I would ask, not to take any motion on this, do what you said, follow up what you said, but I would also ask maybe the county administrator to put Ms. Jenkins and her mom with maybe a staff member that could kind of maybe see what we can do on our level to see how some of her ideas may or may not work. So if you're open to that, sir?
Certainly, that's one. Skylar, you did an amazing job. I know you were nervous over there, but you did a phenomenal job. Your research was really great. The fact that you really kind of went and you tested it out and then coming here and presenting before this board, I don't know if my, at your age, when I was at your age, if I could have done that. So I really want to commend you for that. And we would be happy to maybe arrange a meeting for you and our Public Works Road and Bridge team or whatever to see if maybe there is an opportunity to find like maybe a little area we can do a test application and see what it looks like. And then also with the chair's comments about meeting you up with FDOT and see if that's a possibility as well. But again, you are to be commended. You did a wonderful job, and we're very proud of you. We're glad you took time to come here today. Thank you.
Skylar, could you train...
Skylar, could you train some of the other people that come to the podium there and give them some points as far as anything is concerned? Would you be open to doing that? Skylar, you did a fantastic job. I understand why you took first place in the science fair. Well done, madam. Well done.
Thank you.
Yes, and a great presentation. Thank you. Customarily, we do not take action on public speaking opportunities, but I think you've gotten per, I think you've gotten more response than anybody I have ever seen at the podium. You know, there was a man named, what was it, Art Linkletter? Anybody remember him?
Your date.
Kids. And, you know, and he encouraged people to listen to the, the youth. Well, I think you've gotten everybody's attention, and you also have somebody else, there's somebody else in the audience, our interim Public Works Director, and he's got a few of his staff members here. So you never know who's in the room, who just heard, and that was affirmed by the county administrator, who said he'd be happy to have you connected as well. So big things may be on our horizon from one of the youngest individuals that has ever come to the podium. Thank you.
Awesome.
I was just gonna say, I've seen photos of that glow-in-the-dark, and it's, it's pretty amazing. I, I think it's great if we tried here. And that's Mr. Leesky right behind you. He's, he's in charge of Public Works, and we'll encourage him. Thank you. So glad you're here.
Thank you for this time, too. Thank you so much, and we'll be in touch.
Do you need a note for school?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Tell them to watch the video. That'd be good enough.
We also don't customarily applaud, but in this case, thank you.
Yeah, if they have any problems with attendance, give us a call. We'll vouch for you. Okay. Awesome. All right. That was very feel-good. I hate to move on to actual boring stuff, but public notice items. Mr. DeBra.
Yes, this is a renotice for December 12th. Because of the ad deadlines that we had for Thanksgiving, it was going to run close as far as the ten-day requirement to publish in the newspaper, so I just went ahead and did another notice. And, and this will be a notice of, of the Board of County Commissioners amending parts of Section 210.01 and Section 210.03 of Chapter 210, the tourist development tax code of Indian River County. This will be a public hearing to be held on December 12th at twenty, twenty twenty-three at 9:05, or as soon thereafter as may be heard.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Fantastic. Next item is a request for an executive session on cybersecurity.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Russell, Director of Information Technology. So I'd like to request an executive session with the Board on December 12th, two thousand twenty-three at 10:30 a.m. to discuss two topics related to cybersecurity. The meeting itself, or the topics would be excluded from public release under Florida Statute 119.0725, and the meeting itself would be excluded under Florida Statute Two, or excluded from Florida Statute 286.011. The participants in that meeting would include Rachel Miller, our cybersecurity technician, Michael Zito, Deputy County Administrator, Bill DeBra, our county attorney, John Takanich, our county administrator, a certified court reporter, all of you and me. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions for Dan? I guess we will see you at 10:30 on the 12th for cybersecurity.
Cybersecurity. All right. Thank you.
Sounds good. Bring snacks. All right, before, Commissioners, real quick, before we move on to our last two items, can we get a picture with Skylar? And us, A, so she gets credit for not being at school, but also I think it would be, it would be awesome to show the community that she was here and what she was talking about. So, real quick, if y'all don't mind.
I could actually bring Skylar up here.
Yeah? You want to come up here?
You want to come up here?
Yeah. That would be appropriate.
Make sure that seal is showing, too.
I know.
Maybe she's got some ideas for the other developments.
All right. With that, we will move on to, we're almost there, guys, almost to the end. Public Works Quaydock Landing Subdivision Partial Waiver Request. A lot of different words. Sean, take it away.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sean Leesky, Acting Public Works Director.
So we're gonna, we're gonna have a couple of these, and we're gonna start with the first one, which is Quaydocks. We've got a couple of quick presentations for you this morning. I'd like to start, though, by thanking staff for their work on this. Both staff, Matt and Adam, are here today in case there's any questions as we proceed with this. What we have before you is a couple of floodplain waiver, actually dredge, not dredge and fill, but cut and fill waivers associated with a couple of developments that are coming before the commission today. The first is Quaydock, and just to kind of orient you where we are talking about, this is Highway One. Obviously, you all know the Indian River Lagoon, and where we are right here, this is Attilis. So if you're familiar with Attilis' subdivision, Quaydock is going to be a development directly behind that development along Quaydock Road, which is, which is situated here. Just to kind of give you an idea of what the development is gonna look like, this is what the proposed development is. Again, situated relatively close to the Indian River Lagoon. And just to kind of go over maybe a little bit of what we're talking about, the cut and fill regulations are within the, the land development regulations in Code 930.072I1 A. And essentially, those regulations require that when anybody comes in to do, or potentially is doing work within a floodway, any amount of, of fill material, they need to basically take an equal amount of cut material out so that it equals out, and that they don't, if they are going to add additional fill, that it doesn't impact the, the water by more than a foot. And so what we have here is kind of a couple of alternatives, just to give you an idea of what, what they are requesting is a waiver from both the ten-year and the hundred-year. My understanding is a couple of years ago, our current county attorney at the time, Dylan Rheingold, had suggested that those waivers needed to be separate. I think the presumption was that if you had a ten-year waiver, you automatically had a hundred-year. Dylan felt that, that if you were requesting a waiver for the ten, you also need to be requesting a waiver for the hundred-year. In this situation, Quaydock is actually requesting a waiver for both the hundred and the ten-year. And what you can kind of see here, and these alternatives give you an idea of kind of the proposed development, is the picture on the right. And should they not be given, or granted either of the waivers, if they weren't granted the, the hundred-year, you would be looking at, at this, so you would be cutting off a significant portion of the development. If they weren't granted the ten-year, they would basically be down to, and I'm not sure what that is, essentially nine to ten lots. So the waiver is, is significant for this development. And you can kind of see here, this would be the stormwater pond that they would be proposing in, in their current proposal, should they be granted the waiver. And here would essentially be the stormwater and the storage that would be required if they weren't granted the waiver. Give you a sense of what we're talking about when we talk about impacting the floodplain. This is a kind of a cross-sectional evaluation of the impacts that it would have to the lagoon, and focusing in on that cross-section, if you were to grant the waiver, you can kind of see here, and sorry, it's really difficult to, to read in this image, but in the material you would see that it would impact that, that cross-section by about a foot, half a foot, even with the granted waiver of, of both the ten and the hundred-year waiver. So in that flood raised, flood-rise study, it's impacting that cross-section by about a half a foot. And this is just to flood, give you an idea of what the flood area is, so it is within the flood zone. You can kind of see the entire property is, is kind of within that flood zone. It is an existing citrus grove, old citrus grove, it's an existing citrus grove, it's an, an old citrus grove property and parcel that would be developed. And just to kind of give you an idea of, of the impacts this might have to, to the county, I don't know how many of you are aware of the community rating system that FEMA puts out. It's associated with flood insurance for homeowners, and the county is, is getting a class rating based off of an audit that FEMA does periodically. And so if you kind of look here in this table, you'll see the class rating, you know, basically four, five, and six. And points are awarded based off of certain things that the county does to eliminate and mitigate against flood issues. And so you can kind of see that right now, the county is, in the twenty-two CRS audit that we have, we are in a class five, we got twenty-seven, basically twenty-seven hundred and fifty points during that audit, which puts us in that class five, class five rating, which essentially reduces the, the homeowners who are in those flood hazard areas, it reduces their flood insurance by twenty-five percent. If they're outside that, it's, it's simply ten percent, and that, that's kind of across the board. What we're looking at is, when we had that 2022 audit performed, there was a, a benefit of two hundred points for not, essentially not doing waivers, and that was for a period of time. The, my understanding from staff, though, is they're looking at it, and they believe that if we were to grant waivers, there would be a likelihood that when the next audit was performed, we might lose up to two hundred points. So if you look at that and considering that there would be no other changes from what we had done previously, we would be dropped down to about twenty-five, fifty points, which would still leave us in, in that class five, but kind of more towards the bottom. I think if you look at it now, we're comfortably in the middle of that class five. If we were to lose those two hundred points, we have the chance of being a little bit lower, which would drop us into that class six potentially. So just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention, that we would be losing points perhaps during that audit for granting these waivers. One of the things that, that coming out of this, if, if you do elect to grant these waivers and staff are supporting the waivers at this time, would be to allow staff an opportunity to evaluate our, our code and look at potential changes for that, to ensure that, you know, we're not having these negative impacts from these audits, and ways that we might be able to enhance our, our point system with FEMA when we actually get future audits. One thing to point out, too, my understanding from staff is that FEMA is issuing new CRS manual, and so all bets are really off, unfortunately, on what that means and how that new audit may, may be impacted when they come to do the next audit, because those changes in the CRS manual are not known at this time. So things could change in how they're evaluating the point system and how that transposes. So with that, staff are recommending approval of the waivers at this time. We've been working with our planning division as well, and we are both support of, of granting these waivers. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Commissioners, questions for staff? No? I have a quick question.
Sure.
So there isn't concern at this point that if we do this and the next one, that we'll have a cumulative, we'll start getting a lot more of them, that we'll bring those numbers down?
It's, it's, it's a, I guess from my understanding, it's a, either it's all or nothing. So even granting one, it doesn't matter if you grant one or twenty, that you're gonna lose those points. So, you know, granting today, really, if we grant four more, you know, next year, it's really not gonna have it anymore. It's not like we're gonna lose more points, it's just those two hundred points are basically there because we wouldn't be granting waivers. If we were granting waivers, we would lose those two hundred points regardless of how many we grant.
And you indicated that Public Works and planning doesn't have concerns with these particular waivers impacting flooding in the general area, surrounding them.
You know, our understanding is, is that, you know, and I, and I raised a question early on, that, you know, are we gonna have an impact to adjacent homeowners in, in these situations, and this one in particular, because of how close it kind of backs up against Attilis? My understanding is that some of that will be addressed within the stormwater, so we'll be addressing that within the, how they, you know, develop and, and manage their stormwater, but that this would not have an impact to those adjacent homeowners.
Because I would, I would assume that if the stormwater, they would have to hold more capacity onsite then.
As, as much as possible, but.
Right.
And the engineer, I believe the engineer on record for this one is present. If he's got any questions, he, he might be able to answer some of that as well.
Madam Chair? Yes?
I, I had a question also. Is there a history of this, of granting waivers for, you know, filling in wetlands? And if so, you know, what's our experience of, you know, prior to this request?
So, good question. My understanding from when these, when the, the land development regulations for this cut and fill were developed around nineteen ninety-one, we've essentially granted two prior waivers for subdivisions, one for Orchid Landing, which is actually adjacent to the next one I'll be showing, which is Hammock Shores, and then Province Bay, which is kind of south of the seven, was it the seventeenth or the Barber Bridge? So south of, of that area. And then we also, in 2020, granted a waiver for the Environmental Learning Center, so more of a commercial establishment, commercial development, but not for, for residential. So from my understanding, those are the three that we've granted in the past since, since we developed the cut and fill regulations.
And were there any consequences, especially unexpected ones, from any of those situations?
Not, not to my knowledge. I don't know. Staff might have to speak to that more than, than, I haven't, you know, I've been here for a short period of time, so I don't know the answer to that entirely, but not, not to my knowledge. I don't know, do we know of any impacts? What's that?
What was the question again?
If there were any impacts associated with those, granting of those waivers.
So the...
You need to come up and announce your name.
Orchid Landing and Province Bay were around 2005. It was before I came here. Orchid Landing was prior known as Warren Way, and then during that period where all the subdivisions basically went defunct, when it came back, it came back as Orchid Landing. As an engineer, I was questioning the hundred-year floodplain, and I was provided a blanket waiver prior when it was Warren Way in 2005. So part of the thing we want to do on this approval is we're gonna make sure that whatever you grant follows what you see on paper. So if they decide to change it, they have to come back to you. So we don't get into this, oh, they stopped developing, we don't want the waiver to continue with the property, we want it to continue with the project.
So the waiver's tied to the project specific?
Right. That's what we would prefer to see.
Is that answered?
I think so. I mean, I, I guess some part of my concern is I don't want to be encouraging filling in wetlands.
Orchid, yeah, no, I, I understand. Because right now...
Frankly stated.
Right now, you can mitigate for wetlands and get away with filling wetlands. How it impacts the flood storage, you don't already, you don't always know. Orchid Landing is close, right now is close to the river, so there was, and it's on a very large DOT conveyance ditch before it gets towards our mosquito impoundment, I think we have there. Province Bay, well before my time, I'm not familiar with the South, somebody else may be able to speak to that one more than I.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You, you identified that there could be a, a possible point loss in assessment. We've already engaged in that, correct? We've already lost the points. If, if, if we've done that during that time period, we've, we've already wagered that, so that's not a consideration today, right?
My understanding was that during the last audit, that was not something that was raised, and I don't know if it was the timing of when that audit was done versus when we actually approved that waiver for the Environmental Learning Center. It could have been done before that. So at that time, because of how old the other prior waivers were, they weren't considering those, so we didn't lose out on those points. However, the concern is, is now that it, that we'd be doing these, depending upon when the next audit would be, we would have to raise those as, as potential issues, and we might be, we might lose out on those, those points.
Which is, could be a reduction in funding.
Not necessarily a reduction in funding. It would be a reduction in the, the benefit that residents get from flood insurance. So residents get, as I mentioned, and I can pull that back up, right now, they get a 25% reduction because of the point rating that we have in the CRS system. If we were to lose points, what might happen would be, we would drop down to a class rating. So right now, we're in this five-class rating, meaning they get about a 25% reduction. If we drop down, they would only get a 20% reduction. So it starts to impact homeowners' insurance and their rates that would be available to them. Mind you, again, that that's really if they are in any of these special flood hazard areas. So they would need to be, their homes would need to be located in a flood hazard area in order to get that kind of, that benefit.
You also get the benefit, say, if you're in a Zone X and you get flood insurance, there should be a benefit to that? As far as the insurance.
The next audit is in 2024.
I believe so, yes. And again, we're, we're unsure exactly, since they're revising the CRS manual, they're revising perhaps that audit, standards associated with that. We're unsure exactly what that's going to mean going forward.
So.
But in the meantime, I think staff would also like to look at, you know, look at our statute, look at our ordinances, consider changes, and sometimes some of those changes, you know, maybe even a change to this, depending upon how we change it, might change how those points would be evaluated and considered. And so I think coming out of this, if we, if we do grant it, we would still like to get direction from the, the Commission to, to move forward with evaluating some potential code changes that would help us actually get more points within that rating system as well.
Sean, is it safe to say that, one, we would get the criteria for the, the next audit well in advance, and we could evaluate those? And if we find that this current, you know, allowance or this, what we're being requested to waive would diminish the, our points and thus impact our residents, we could change the ordinance or, and eliminate this requirement and/or find other areas that we might be able to mitigate and to maintain at least the percentage that we have so we're not unnewly impacting the, you know, in flood insurance rates for our residents?
I think we'd like to do that regardless, and, and maybe Adam can speak to that a little bit more. I think some of the surrounding counties don't even have that in their ordinances, so I'm not sure how that's evaluated if they don't have that kind of cut and fill balance requirement in their ordinance. I don't know how, how FEMA looks at that. So we would certainly need to evaluate that, but I think regardless of, of the outcome of that, I think staff would still like to look at our ordinances and look if there's changes that we can do that would help us to raise our, our point system and maybe get more points so we could actually have a positive impact and move more into that class four rating where we might get more benefit for our residents.
Do we know when those new criteria are gonna be coming out?
I don't know.
We don't know exactly.
I mean, it's not gonna roll out as we're doing the audit, right?
Find a guess with FEMA and the federal government.
It could basically be, hey, you're having your audit in March, and here are the guidelines, ends February. I cannot speak to that. Hopefully, it's not that tight, but takes bureaucracy to write the manuals, so.
One thing we did, have learned that FEMA can get through any, the thickest of insulation to get to the point at which they want to be at. However, with that said, you're requesting to go with a positive approval with the understanding that we also will be including direction for staff to develop a change in the, our,
Consider and look at, and perhaps bring back a change in the ordinance.
Yeah, I would think we would need to do that irregardless of how this,
Yes, I don't think you.
I encourage ordinance review.
Let's go with so moved.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Lor, and a question by Commissioner Ehrman.
I'm sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
I would agree with, with, with all. We need to definitely reevaluate this whole thing. I mean, the, plus, this is fairly complicated for the public to understand, and some days, I'm not so sure I understood it when I read it four or five times.
Alternative number one, beating either request, and that kills the project, correct?
That would essentially kill the project. I mean, they can't, they can't build, I mean, it's not worth building 10 lots.
Alternative two is what y'all are recommending, which is 100-year floodplain waiver, any amount of 52 acre feet or 84,000 cubic yards required to meet, which would require, which would make them able to meet the 10-year floodplain, correct?
In this one, it's, it's,
Flood cut, a cut and fill requirements, I'm talking. I'm sorry. The, with the exception of the waiver to coincide with preliminary private appraisal expiration date or any extension thereof. So that's what y'all are recommending with that.
So in this situation, essentially what they're doing is they're adding more fill than they are removing, right? And so, and Adam actually explained this really well this morning. Think of a bathtub, right? It's at a certain level. If you add dirt into that bathtub, what happens to the level of the water? It, it rises, right? And so what's happening is, is, is they are essentially adding more dirt to that area than they would be cutting out of it. Therefore, it's causing, and again, the kind of studies showing that transect, it's essentially raising that water elevation by about half a foot.
Right, well, yeah. And I mean, if I'm familiar with that area, I grew up in Wabash, so I know Quaydock Road very well. It's across the street almost from the old fire station, Air Station 5, and.
That is, that is a low area. It is a low area. And if this'll, if this'll maintain it and, you know, make a good development, as long as, and they're required to be on septic and sewer? I mean, I'm sorry, they're required to be on sewer and county water.
Okay.
Well, that's all the questions I have.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer and a second by Commissioner Lor to approve staff recommendation. Any other questions? Anybody from the public? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed?
I'm opposed. Nay.
Motion carries with Commissioner Moss dissenting. All right. The next item is Hammock Shore Subdivision Partial Waiver Request to the 100-year floodplain. Cut and fill balance requirement. Take it away, Sean.
This is the same, and this is, just happens to be another development. And again, kind of orienting you, here's Highway 1, the lagoon, what we're talking about, and this is actually one of the ones that we talked about, Orchid Landing. This was one of the, the developments that had received a prior, prior waiver, so it's actually adjacent to that subdivision. This is actually Quaydock Road here, so we're talking just a little bit north of where that development is. Again, here's kind of the general layout of what the developer is proposing. You can kind of see its distance is a little bit further than, than Quaydock from the lagoon. We'll, we'll probably over about a quarter mile. And here's kind of the, the alternatives. Again, if you, if you grant the waiver, here's what they'd be looking at. If this waiver, and in this one, they're only requesting the waiver from the 100-year. So it would impact the development, perhaps not as substantially as Quaydock, but you can kind of see you'd be cutting off portion, or they would be losing a portion here, and they would actually be losing a portion of the lots in and around these areas. So this is a similar situation. Again, here's that transect of, of the area in the lagoon. And in this case, it's only impacting by .32, so not quite that half a foot across that transect. And kind of here's an idea. So even a portion in this case, the entire subdivision is not outside the floodplain, but some of it actually happens to be. So the floodplain is in turquoise. So about a quarter of the lots are, are even currently outside the floodplain. And you kind of see surrounding developments where they develop and, and basically fill up and, and put those residents in the areas outside that floodplain. So they would be doing something similar here, which is ultimately why they probably have more fill than they would cut, is they have to build those houses up to get them out of the floodplain. And again, just to reiterate kind of the community rating system. And so again, in this case, we are actually only requesting the waiver for the 100-year floodplain in this instance.
All right. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns?
This is old citrus grove, too, I believe, just like the,
I believe so.
Graphest one, yeah. Both of them are old grape, I think there were grapefruit, old grapefruit trees in there.
And this one's a little bit more grown out since I think it was a citrus grove. I mean, you know, Quaydock still kind of has the general, you know, there's not a whole, it's just still kind of cleared, and there's not a whole lot of growth. This one's kind of grown in a little bit. But yeah, my understanding is it's still an old, old grove area.
Okay.
Quaydock was used for stuff to be transported up and down the Indian River, that's why it got its name. So that was all, that was all grape.
So basically, it's the same scenario.
Same scenario with just a request for the 100-year. In this case, they're not requesting the 10-year.
Sean?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So the difference here, I think, is the, and just to be clear, the pre and post-development, they'd be, they'd be responsible for making sure that they're handling their stormwater post-development as it is pre-development, and therefore, because you have this subdivision to the west or the east. So that's the, that, there's a little bit of a difference here. You have a budding subdivision right there. So that is correct?
There is in the other case, too. They were budding the other one, the Attilis. This one happens to abut Orchid Landing. So they do basically abut. I mean, this one, it's more the stormwater pond that would be abutting some of the properties. In the other case, it was all lots. So, but yes, I think when they get to the stormwater, I mean, and, and Adam, you know, is, will be reviewing those types of things. I mean, they, they ensure that the, the site can handle the stormwater appropriately.
By the way, they, the, going forward, they could not offload onto the adjoining properties, so that is a given, that, that the stormwater would have to be handled and addressed.
Within the site, right.
And I'm assuming this is structured the same, where it's tied to the project, not to the property?
We would be tying it to the project.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner, what is your pleasure?
Approval.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Lor. Anybody from the public? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed?
Nay, opposed.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Moss dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners. If there is nothing else for the good of the order.
Madam Chair, fine inaugural meeting to this great year ahead of us.
Awesome. All right. Thank you so much.
I will not be here next year.
Oh, you won't be here next Tuesday. So you're gonna miss a cybersecurity,
Well, I'm gonna try to get a cybersecurity one-on-one.
When it all goes downhill, we'll know who to blame, because he wasn't here. All right. Duly noted. Thank you. We stand adjourned.